Thank all of you for being here this evening. The public hearing by the Committee on Health, Economic Development, Homeland Security, and Senior Citizens Subcommittee to review the proposed rules and regulations on the WKIN KC Conception Compassionate Cannabis Use Act of 2013 is now called to order. It is about 6:07 in the evening. For the record, and in accordance with 5GCA Chapter 8, Subsection 8, 107, I want to say notices were sent out via to all the main media broadcasting outlets, to all the senators on July 13, 2016, which adheres to the five-day notice. And the second notice was sent out on Monday, July 18, which adhered to the 48-hour notice. This evening, ladies and gentlemen, we will address two measures, Bill 343-33 and Bill 344-33, that the community has helped guide since the enactment of the WKIN KC Conception Compassionate Cannabis Use Act of 2013. We have put a lot of work into these measures in an attempt to determine how our medical cannabis program will function. And these measures will clarify definitions, safeguard a patient’s right to privacy, improve patient access to medical cannabis, and provide clear guidelines for the medical cannabis program. We have added a lab testing requirement, which is a crucial element to the program that will ensure that any medical cannabis that is consumed in this territory will be a medical-grade cannabis. These measures are a start and are something our medical cannabis program can be built off. There continues to be new developments, ladies and gentlemen, in the medical cannabis industry. I want to note that many states’ medical cannabis programs are constantly revised to account for these new developments, and we are catching up with these new developments. We are here to discuss your thoughts and concerns on these two bills. I want to share with you that joining me this evening is the good Senator from Timony, Senator Jimmy Espaldón. Thank you for joining me, sir. And in the interest of time, ladies and gentlemen, what I will do tonight, I will call you as your names are written on the sign-up sheets. And in the interest of time, I will allow the speakers to speak on both Bill 343 and 344 at the same time. So if you have testimony for both bills, you can speak on Bill 343 first, and then speak on 344, so that you don’t have to come up to the table again. And I think it just saves more time there. I would like to ask that each of you, when you come up here to speak at the table, the presentation table, that you identify your name first, which bill you are addressing, and then continue your testimony. If you’re going to do both, please note that you will do both, and tell me which bill you’re talking about first. Okay? Fair enough. With that being said, if there are any written testimonies that you’re presenting orally, we ask to help the committee transcribe these documents right away. We ask that you submit your written testimony after you present, so that it makes it easier for the committee to transcribe. Okay. Sign them all seat. Up to speak this evening, ladies and gentlemen, is, I have August Fest. I have Antonio Siswiko. I’d also ask, ladies and gentlemen, please to just have courtesy for the other folks presenting this night. If you do have a phone, please, a mobile device, please put it on vibrate mode, so it just gives courtesy and respect to the others here. So please, if I called your name, please come up to the table. August Fest, Linda Cepeda, Antonio Siswiko. Marcus, is that Marcus Cepeda? Please come on up. You’re just here to support, okay? Director Gilliam, are you presenting your written testimony this afternoon? Please come up to the table. Mr. Fest, please have a seat. Okay. Thank you. Yes, sir, we did receive the testimony. Yes, sir. Yes, I do, I have both. For the record, ladies and gentlemen, before I have Mr. Fest, I will go ahead and read the bills. It’s the title of each bill, for the record. Bill 343-33COR, as introduced by TR Munia Barnes, is an act to repeal and reenact Article 24 of Chapter 12, Title 10, Guam Code Annotated, relative to strengthen the provisions of the WKIN KC Conception, the Second Compassionate Cannabis Use Act of 2013. 344-33COR, as introduced by TR Munia Barnes, is an act to add a new sub-Article 1 to Article 24, Chapter 12, Title 10 of Guam Code Annotated, relative to adding home cultivation provision to the WKIN KC Conception Compassionate Cannabis Use Act of 2013. Mr. Fest, you may start. Make sure you speak your name into the record, please.
My name is August Fest. Senators, committee members, citizens of Guam, I thank you for this hearing and the opportunity to testify. I ask that the hearing oral testimonies be limited to the persons that are claimed sound mind and not brag of their legal status of insane. I challenge any such individual to submit their testimony in written form. This hearing, as I understand it, is to give constructive input, constructive criticism for opposition of Bill 343, impertinent coinciding considerations, and not a form for full-blown adult use legalization. Though I do wholeheartedly and openly support that notion of movement, the time for that is not at this hearing. It also diminishes the legitimacy of these proceedings and bills, as we are in public view. It will also allow in a lot the precious time to those who have meaningful testimony and to better serve the patients and citizens of Guam. I always become perplexed when signing into these hearings, as you ask to mark either support or opposed. A maybe box should also be an option, as I support in theory, but not in all detailed applications. I am certain that others feel the same. It would appear we’re making slow but marked progress with the introduction of the three new bills concerning medical cannabis, one being the rejection of the draft rules crafted by the Department of Public Health and Social Services. This in itself took over 18 months. Thank you, Director Gilliam. After the June 7 hearing, in just a few weeks, we had a whole new bill and set of rules. Isn’t that odd? Perhaps it is time for the director to give serious consideration to retirement. The comments I had prepared for Wednesday in the previous draft of this testimony concerning the directors were not as tempered, gracious, or understanding as this version. The recent short delay for this hearing may have served a compassionate purpose. Before I begin addressing any components of Bill 343, I think it of paramount importance that I mention and outline again, and we take into consideration, a vital and key component to any medical cannabis discussion that has been noticeably absent by choice, that is the medical community, namely the doctors, never won at any hearing. Great shame on them. I testified at the June 7 hearing as to what their very negative positions are according to the news clips and my personal inquiries to the head of the Guam Medical Association that quoted and mirrored that of the Guam Medical Society. Just last week, after the hearing on Bill 345, I had a conversation with a Dr. Vincent Duanez from the doctor’s clinic. He stated, “No doctor on Guam will issue any statement for medical cannabis use,” and he is under the impression that a doctor on Guam is not permitted to do so. I tried to explain him about the Supreme Court ruling of 2003, regardless of any established law, but he would not listen. I tried to offer him documented PET scans, image proof of tumor eradication by using concentrated cannabis oil, but he rejected the notion. I left him by saying, “Get your head out of sand and seek the truth. Your friends and partners could have been saved.” I was referring to Dr. Erickson and Dr. Perez, who both also practiced at the doctor’s clinic, and they both died from cancer recently, Erickson in August of 2015 and Perez of November 2015. They were also married to one another. Medical cannabis compassionate use: Too little, too late for two doctors on Guam. Again, shame on any doctor who does not embrace and who is against whole cannabis or whole cannabis extracts as medicine. Doctors should learn the truth and not follow the corporate medical paradigm and federal government lie. Yesterday was the anniversary of my father dying from cancer. Even the FDA is wanting extensive research to commence and is screaming for rescheduling by the DEA, as the USA is comparatively far behind in research. In response to DEA claim, they would give an announcement, they would make an announcement by the end of the first half of this year, now the DEA is stating they’re not going to hold themselves to any artificial deadline. Typical. Stated by Dr. Shea, “At this point, I do not know which doctor on Guam will feel comfortable certifying a patient as qualified.” And as Dr. Titana stated, “Physicians are already too busy seeing patients for medical diseases and will have little time to discuss the implications of prescribing a drug that is still illegal by federal statute.” He also stated, “I do not think Guam doctors will be more comfortable prescribing marijuana due to the fact that if it is legalized locally, it will still be legal at the federal level, and I do not think that the doctors want to jeopardize their license and DEA certificate until this matter is resolved at the federal level.” These and other opinions of the heads of the medical organizations are of published news articles. Again, I suggested at the June 7 hearing to publish a public service announcement regarding the law and a registered identification, identified doctor survey. Some education seminars would also be in good order beforehand for the good doctors. The information, along with the benefits, is very vast in scope and nature. Again, I am compelled to inject, and please someone educate these doctors. The Supreme Court of the Ninth District, which includes Guam, the second and final decision in 2003 codified that doctors are protected from any legal action or penalties of disqualification from merely issuing a patient a physician’s statement or written certification, as since it is not an actual prescription, it is protected by the First Amendment and is upheld regardless of any local law being in place or not. I might add, regardless of who is president. It is not some crazy tinfoil hat-wearing conspiracy that doctors on Guam are paranoid or against cannabis and cannabis patients on Guam. It is not covert, excuse me, covert at all. It is overtly openly stated and reported in the newspapers. Again, shame on them. Remember, if we haven’t any doctors on board, we haven’t any patients with statements, which means we have catastrophic failure for the patients and the businesses upon launch. I highly suggest we implement some type of education for the very stubborn, wholer-than-now uninformed doctors. You want fees? We need doctors. It’s that plain and simple. Onto the bill. Bill 343, Subsection 122503. Definitions. Adequate supply was literally scratched out and replaced with allowable amount of 2.5 ounces every 14 days. The problem here is, it does not take into account for concentrated edibles or concentrated cannabis oils or quantities cultivated at home that must last until the next harvest of 4.5 months in the future. And not forget the making of, and storage of edibles in oil. It mentioned concentrated edibles, but does not allow by content and makes no mention of oils. As just a week’s dosage will exceed this 2.5 ounce limit. I estimate a year or more after the first dispensary even opens before concentrated oil will be commercially available on the island. So a desperate cancer patient must make their own. We must recreate and insert better language and conditions for these considerations. Having to provide evidence for the need for greater amounts in a peer-reviewed medical journal is absurd, disingenuous, correction outright dishonest by whom ever insisted this condition be included, as medical journals currently do not discuss or include cannabis dosages, if they even discuss cannabis at all. The definition also uses the word cannabis, that is another word defined to include all parts of plant, not just the medical flowers. It does exclude stalks, but does include the large fan or sun leaves. The drafters of any medical cannabis documents should have a much better understanding of cannabis as medicine in the use of words to describe it than is currently exhibited. Debilitating medical condition. Thank you for including any other medical condition, medical treatment, or disease for which the patient’s practitioner has determined that the use of medical cannabis may provide relief. Without this change, any bill would have been a failure for the patients of Guam. Medical use. I refrain from commenting too much on this definition at this time, though I have expressed my opinion in the past. This is the same definition used since day one. Let the legal chips fall where they may. Practitioner. Thank you for the change from physician. This will help a patient highly challenging task obtaining a written certification. Qualified patient. Thank you for removing the mandatory patient registration and cards. To save precious time at this hearing, I will refrain from commenting too much on the business aspects stated in this version of bill and rules, as I am not seeking to become a cannabis entrepreneur and will defer to my peers that are, though anything that impedes a business also impedes a patient. I will leave my comments regarding businesses to fees. Subsection 122509, fees. Currently, the price of cannabis on Guam is beyond the price of gold and beyond affordability of most patients. Currently cannabis is produced and dispensed with little to no overhead, except for residential rates for electricity, nutrients, grow lights, and garden supplies. The transition to legal retail production and distribution as expensive rent or real estate and commercial rates for electricity and adding an enormous fee structure can only drive the price of medicine up even further. At the June 7 hearing, I introduced a concept and plan for the state and the businesses and the patients to be in a cooperative partnership to keep things fair for all and to keep the price low for the medicine. It would appear my suggestion fell on deaf ears. For cultivation, you replace the one-size-fits-all approach to tiered sizes, which in theory is a good idea, but when you limit the smallest to production of 50 plants at a time and want $8,200 in fees, I feel this is ridiculous, to put it mildly, along with a grossly exaggerated piece for larger cultivation facilities and dispensaries. $16,200 or $36,200 for medium or large cultivation sites, and $16,200 for a dispensary or a so-called manufacturing operation, in reality, a kitchen. What do you think this will do for the price of the medicine, especially oil? Do you care? I think not. Have you been listening to what we’ve been telling you for almost two years now? Again, I think not. Whoever is responsible for this continued insistence of these high fees is a cancer on society. Step down and resign. You do not have the patient’s best interest at mind. Added government revenue is your only cause. Again, Washington State is only $262 for an application fee and $1,060 yearly for a license for either a cultivation site or a dispensary. Again, if they can afford to do it at this rate, we can do, we can too. Anything more is unacceptable, especially for Guam, plain and simple. I hope you take this suggestion seriously, and if you do, please also regulate the wholesale and retail price of the medicine to that of Washington State. You can justify the price regulation to the businesses with the great reduction in fees as the trade-off. It will also help them immensely at startups. Anytime you read or hear of legalizing cannabis for medical or personal use, all you read and hear about is how much money can be made individually or for the government. It is utterly repulsive and disgusting to me as a patient and as a citizen consumer. Remember, we’re talking about unpollinated dried flowers here that could grow almost just as well wild. Again, another episode of the never-ending continuing saga of Reefer Madness. I would have to agree with the DEA in one thing concerning cannabis. It has a potential for abuse, but not by the end user, but by the government and all involved in either the prohibition or these popular racketeering schemes. Just because it’s in government oversight doesn’t make the claim any less legitimate. Just because other locations are getting away with it now is because it hasn’t been challenged, yet. Rescheduling will open the door for all such court cases. I am certain our nation’s forefathers are rolling over in their graves. If any bureaucrat, physician, or politician is offended by my comments, then I say, own your own shame, as you’re educated enough and paid well enough to do a much better job, and please have your moral compass calibrated or replaced. Don’t blame me, I’m just the guy with the flashlight and magnifying glass. Please take my suggestions into serious consideration for changes before any vote by the Senate. Thank you for your time and the opportunity to speak. That was 343.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate the coffee. Next, ladies and gentlemen, we have Ms. Linda.
I got 344.
Oh.
343, 344.
Thank you, I do apologize. Please proceed.
Bill 344, hearing testimony. Again, I’m August Fest. Senators, citizens, I prepared a separate document testimony for Bill 344 as I was under depression, nervous to be two separate hearings, as they are two separate bills. I wholeheartedly thank you for your work to introduce this bill and the hard work and the long process of the original bill, 215, and the very long process of the rejection of both draft rules submitted by the Department of Public Health and Social Services, and of course, the various switch actions and work starting over. Again, I support Bill 344 in theory, but not in all detailed applications. As always, the devil’s in the details. Subsection 122408, home cultivation permits. Paragraph A, as I testified and pointed out at the June 7 hearing, referring to patient registrations, by all accounts was recognized by absence in Bill 343, cannabis currently is in Schedule I status with the DEA. Mandatory registration is a violation of the Fifth and Second Amendments through the Constitution. Self-incrimination cannot be mandated. Also, paragraph A, limiting patients to six plants. There are an extreme amount of variables when it comes to cultivation of cannabis, even more so when done at home and indoors. I relocated here from Delmore County, California, where in 2013, they lifted the 99-plant limit per patient for home cultivation. They deemed it to be too restrictive. Please take note. I’ve been studying cannabis cultivation since 2001, and at times and places, practiced the craft extensively. Believe me when I say, it’s a very tricky business and expensive doing it indoors, and the results greatly vary. It has been my experience that six plants was even the most experienced grower exercising diligent practice, and under the best of conditions, six plants will not produce enough to last 4.5 months until the next harvest. A totally inexperienced peer here today may disagree, and you can find reports of exaggerated results, but bragging is not pertinent to this discussion, nor does it coincide with your average patient or novice gardener. Feminized seeds are not guaranteed. In my experience with them, it’s still a 50/50 ratio of males to females. Males are not used for medicine, as they do not produce female flowers. It takes 70 days to determine sex under the conventional growing method. Test, pets, and disease are always a threat to be expected and to kill at least some in any attempt. Also to mention, some seeds do better than others, and some plants do not do as well as others. The costly light intensity must be combated with costly air conditioning. Humidity and supplemental CO2 content must also be accounted for and contended with, along with the strictly guarded requirements of 12 hours of light and 12 hours of total darkness for flowering. To summarize and state again, for your average patient and novice gardener, a six-plant limit will not be of much benefit after all the money and time is spent and the highest of hopes, then end up having to spend even more money at the dispensary for expensive medicine because things just didn’t work out as hoped or planned. Adequate square footage would be better serve anyone trying to meet their own needs. 32 to 50 square feet total cannabis space per patient should suffice, but does not account for concentrated oil. That’s about four-foot-by-eight-foot or six-foot-by-eight-foot space, or any combination thereof, any division or separation of seedlings and vegetative growth from the flowering dark cycle growth for increased rotations and decreased length of time between harvests. This also allows and accounts for males and expected unavoidable plant failures. With these considerations in mind and accounted for, we are in conflict with Bill 343’s allowable amount that I have addressed in the prior testimony. Paragraph E, there shall be one permit per resident and one permit per dwelling in a multi-dwelling residence. Taking side in the issue with the word permit, hypothetically speaking, when you state multi-dwelling residence, does this mean if there’s a duplex or more structures or considering apartment buildings, only one patient is allowed to cultivate in any given building? Please some thought and clarity here. I think would be better stated as one medical garden per patient and only one medical garden per structured dwelling or household. This, however, does not address the need for multiple patients living together in the same structured dwelling or household. Subsection 122413, seizure of cannabis plants. The Department, I’m quoting the rules, “The Department and authorized law enforcement shall destroy all cannabis plants on the qualified patient’s residence and otherwise seize and remove all cannabis plants from the qualified patient’s residence prior to revoking the qualified patient’s home cultivation permit.” This seems very outside the rules of law. Destruction or seizure before revocation? This calls into question how the Department of Public Health and Social Services has determined that such action is necessary, or has done any preliminary voluntary inspection, or has conducted a hearing outlined in subsection 122412, revocation of home cultivation permit. Is this prompted in the actionable by rumor or anonymous tip, or just a hunch, or just to make sure, or personal vendetta? What about unlawful search and seizure, as protected by the Constitution law of the Fourth Amendment? A search warrant signed by a judge is required. A hearing should be conducted before any revocations, or illegal or legal search or seizure, and the mentioned notice should be followed by the hearing, and the hearing followed by the revocation if found by evidence warranted. This is also another reason that a permit in being on anyone’s list is not only unconstitutional, but has an easy and great potential for abuse. This is all I have so far at this time for this particular bill, and I hope you take my concerns into considerations for changes to the bill before a vote by the Senate. Again, I thank you for your time and the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Fest. Yes. Ladies and gentlemen, next I have Ms. Linda Cepeda to speak for Elisa Revelo.
I ask you voters and senators, to imagine a world where people, or our people, do not have to rely on medical fundraising to get the have to rely on medical fundraising to get the treatment and preventative therapy they need off island. I ask you to imagine our island where our community, your voters and supporters, and taxpayers are able to control their health and proactively treat and monitor their health and their quality of life with the best natural cure available here, made available from the safest, most stringent dispensary and cultivation facility, all on island. I ask you also to imagine that if you were put in a very real situation where someone you desperately needed, you love desperately needed, an alternative cure that would help them get better, who would you want that person to be? Who would you want that person to be that would hold your hand, walk you and your family and all your caretakers through the process of safely identifying and safely providing that choice? Alternative cure for your family? I ask you to please think about that when you review these bills, and most especially, review the application, the qualification processes, and the license process. In a society where we cannot even have our blood transfusions, our intravenous blood byproducts covered by the few insurance companies on island, only available to the very few who have health insurance, how can we continue to live not having control and fair, safe access to such a natural holistic medicine that could prevent the very illnesses that cause our people to die or become hospitalized? It is not that our community, our island, or the world wants cannabis to be safely accessible, but rather, it is our community and our island that needs safe and fair access to cannabis. This is very real, is a very real need, where these licenses should be awarded to the most qualified and concerned applicants without any limitations, without any limited number of license caps. Please lift the number of type III commercial cultivation facilities as listed in Bill 343-3, with 5,001 to 10,000 square feet of canopy from the current allowance to only three, to licenses based on meeting the safety and legal requirements. This is very important for there to be clear indication of fair license allocation and application review, and will prevent monopolization of this agricultural industry to those with a potentially inferior product. We, your voters, future patients and taxpayers, recognize, respect, and follow the hard work and honest work of all the unbiased, uncorrupt agencies and lawmakers that have come together to pave the way for safe and stringent legal access to cannabis for those who suffer. We respectfully anticipate working together with all the officials, law enforcement, and health agencies that will be left with the task to execute and regulate this program. Please remove the large side cap so that the best cultivators and advocates can make their medicines available to our people without limitation and without corrupt influence. Thank you for bringing us together, and thank you, senators, for your time and ear.
Mrs. Sepeda, again, Ms. Sepeda, did you drop a copy?
Yes, I did.
Okay, thank you. Again, Ms. Sepeda was talking on behalf of Elisa Revelo, lactation counselor, mother of four children, juvenile industry, small business owner and caretaker to many. I wanted to just note that for the record. Next to speak is Mr. Susuiko, Antonio Susuiko, Consigliere.
Buenas tardes. Si, Antonio Salas Susuiko. Ma panao guhu ele. Billy Chogat. Ele is lower agat, taza curb. Taza, taza stortbuen ma topa pa ele. Ma protejo. Man agueza ita onto ele. Sa puro ma mamobli. Lo podestia sumtu nae pa' gu ni. Ta sa sangan put marijuana. Haga sa marijuana mi gaigi Guam. This ti 60s ma mandoduko a. Ta tungwa naa. Haga sa lingaya meri kono na baobas ti marijuana. Lo guahu utungo na lachi zu na sinangan. Anadiu istina chetnut, a bipolar disorder and post-traumatic disorder. Distia tres años su. Distia tres años su. Opaisin si zu, sa pa' zu, nu noit n'estina chetnut. I chetnut sesuti ma comprendio. Ma p'na ma acceptai. Bulas sinangan tau tau, guana boina tun na sa guatu sinangan ya, nestai kursoon. Anai masada man si marijuana anai, anai dosi años su. Edzu nu tutuhun, amuna setbi. Cinquenta dos años nu na setbi marijuana. Una setbi gasna nao, ina zuda. Una setbi giri parente susia ma ni na zuda. Anai adanche de di earthquake in 1993. Da adzama talu ititanosu. Humanu pa mental health. Da matogu isti ma alu psychological report. Estina report matugi, August 1994. Winina report, lingaya, singubai ma mension cannabis. I was using cannabis to help with my migraine. I was using cannabis to help me with my appetite. I was using cannabis for my anxiety. I was using cannabis for my pain. I was using it because I knew somehow it was medically helping me. Now, we're at that point where this plan called marijuana is in the birds of entering our island, and I believe that this plan has a right to coexist here on our island. I mean, why not? My caregiver just took me a month and a half ago to Amsterdam so that I can see for myself exactly what's going on. It's quite surprising, however, it's also quite amazing. I asked a lot of questions, and there's only one thing that was very consistent with all the people that lived there. They had this attitude of togetherness, a sense of ownership. The way they explain it to me, if you are anti-marijuana, or it bothers you, then get out of here, get out of Amsterdam, go live somewhere else. This lady where I bought this band, it's a simple band, probably two pennies from China. She sells about 800 to 1,000 bands a day in a little corner. She said, three kids to private school, three kids to college in England, just by selling this band that says, Stay Come, Smoke Weed, Amsterdam. Now, as we go about around Amsterdam, we never heard any sirens, we never had to look behind our backs. Yeah, we expected it to be up in smoke all over, and it's not really like that. You go into the coffee shops, and you, there's the menu, whatever you want is there. So, when we're talking about regulation right now, in the beginning, they had a lot of challenges according to the old timers, and the old timers are all millionaires selling little trinkets like this, or t-shirts at Amsterdam. Anyway, it's really not that surprising to a lot of elders. According to this young lady over here, she's saying about 66 or 63% of our residents already are for marijuana. The way the bill is structured right now, because I am a definitely qualified patient, you have to remember that with the 3,000 potential patients, every patient has a caregiver. And the numbers game for you guys, those are two votes. So suddenly, the 3,000 becomes 6,000 votes. So in sheer numbers, the people that are hurting, that are in pain, that have a lot of reservation to come here and plead with you for your compassionate love and kindness for all of us that are suffering. Every day for somebody with mental illness is a challenge. I haven't slept for two days or two nights because bipolar being up or down, so I'm on the up side, but eventually, I know the downside is gonna come in, and that's when I'm gonna crash, because eventually, I'm not a machine, and that's when I start making wrong decisions. I get more confused. To tell the truth, I'm at that level right now. Within two days, I had to call Luhans to come and let me in my truck, because I'd locked myself out. Two days. I said, oh, man, I have to call timeout on myself. Senator Barnes, when we were talking about this bill, I told you that I was gonna go to the States. I even wrote you a letter saying I'm gonna go and try to take care of myself, both physically and mentally. I was really praying that I would come back and be better, but missing that flight is very important, because I'm right here right now. I'm representing my generation, I'm representing those patients, my primus and my primus that have gout, that are all going, I, I, I.
So you support the bill?
Yeah, that have migraines, you know? Anyway, I'm just telling you that I am a living testimony with documentation that says, hey, marijuana is a medical plan that our island really needs, and more importantly, sufferers like me have been waiting all our lives. In my case, it's been a while. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Susuiko.
Thank you for supporting me, baby.
Ms. Pellicani, Senator Maasi, Mr. Susuiko. Ms. Pellicani, Consigliere.
So I might have some typos, because I wrote this for Wednesday, okay? Hafade, my name is Andrea Pellicani, and I am the President of Women Grow Guam and a founding member of Grassroots Guam. Thank you for having us here to testify on behalf of many in our community. I would like to extend a dunkaluna suzuus maasi to Vice Speaker Cruz, Senator Espaldán, Senator Torres, Senator Uggan, Senator Sinicalis, Senator Tony Ada, and Senator Morrison, and of course, you, Senator Barnes, for taking the time to personally meet with us to discuss your issues. It is our hope that we can assist in finding solutions for any concerns you may have with Bills 343 and 344, and our community should know that you have actively taken part in this discussion. It is our hope and dream that when these bills hit the session floor, that we will already have the valuable knowledge and solutions ready before it even gets called for a vote. Growing cannabis is not an easy process and takes much time and care. I once met a horticulturist who referred to his plants as his children. There is a reason why greenhouses are called nurseries. Very few patients will opt for home cultivation, as the time and dedication needed are hard to come by for most working individuals. Growing medical-grade cannabis is a full-time job. I understand the responsibility that you, our policymakers, are saddled with to protect our community. However, the numbers already exist. If we would like to know how home cultivation will affect our community, the data already exists, as there are some who are already doing it illicitly. Let's not make any assumptions that this will be harmful for our community. We are only regulating what already exists, we are not creating something new. A simple search on Google yields almost no statistical data, and it may be an assumption on my part, but since home cultivation has been legal in certain states for some time now, surely this would yield some article or data to show or support the claim that home cultivation is bad for communities, but it is hard to find. I think we need to look no further than the data that already exists here on Guam. We know we have a consumption rate of 18% on the illicit market, which is approximately 28,000 people consuming almost 6,000 pounds of cannabis. That's a lot of quote, "home-growing" unquote, that already exists. We anticipate that this number will far exceed the number of registered patients for some time. We should already have statistics to show how many children are gaining access to this cannabis, how many are being admitted to the hospital from overdose, and we already know that nobody has died from lethal overdose. And the crimes being committed in relation to cannabis are those caused by working in the shadowy underbelly of the illicit market, theft, violent crime, or involvement in other illicit drugs such as methamphetamines or ICE, where law enforcement cannot penetrate nor can regulators regulate. A no vote on home cultivation is a vote to continue on condoning this dangerous illicit activity for the most needy of patients. Disallowing home cultivation will only affect those patients who are financially strapped to pay the out-of-cost expense, out-of-pocket expense that will not be covered by their insurance company. These patients tend to have spent their life savings on medical bills for their severe or degenerative conditions and who may not be able to work. These patients will need the most amount of medicine for their conditions, and this is who will be affected should this bill not pass. If medical cannabis is going to be legal, then let it be legal. A partially legal program is one that is born out of a lack of education and fear of cannabis. If people can brew their own beer, or make their own herbal medicines, or ask a suruhano to make it for them, then they should be able to grow cannabis, since cannabis has killed nobody due to lethal overdose. If cannabis has killed nobody to lethal overdose, what exactly is it that we are afraid of? Please don't discriminate among the most needy of our patients in the most dire of circumstances. circumstances. From a commerce perspective, there is something to learn about what happens when something becomes a commodity. Home cultivation is the last thing that will protect the integrity and purity of the cannabis plant from going down the road of tobacco, alcohol, or pharmaceuticals. This goes against the very spirit and culture of herbal and holistic treatments. Again, cannabis is the alternative, and it is a culture and spirit that incorporates yoga, meditation, organic eating, and many other things that redirects us away from processed or genetically modified food, commercialization, and commodities. We already see what is happening in the industry, as more and more states are rejecting home cultivation, as sweeping change is taking place across the country. Let's not follow that trend and provide for our patients and community by doing what is right, not by what other states are doing. Let's be conscientious and mindful of how good policy guided by our mission of safe access will benefit our community. With regards to the amended Casey Compassionate Use Act of 2013, we are extremely encouraged by the major changes opening up this program to more patients and businesses. We think this addresses most of the major concerns we've had. While there are some minor changes that we will address in order to clarify some of the language, these are just minor improvements on overall what is destined to be a good foundation for our medical cannabis program. We're only gonna address the major ones, and then some of the minor ones we'll just submit as written. Our considerations for amendments on Bill 344, we'll go with 344 first, because it's shorter. Home cultivation permits. Section A, the department shall register and issue a home cultivation permit to a qualifying patient, allowing the patient or the patient's designated caregiver to cultivate six plants on the premises of the qualifying patient's place of residence. For analysis, the designation of six plants does not give consideration to what happens when the plants are harvested. Depending on how patients or caregivers cycle their plants out, harvested flour will most likely exceed the allowable amount of two and a half ounces in the two-week period, immediately creating an overage that will encourage gray-market activity. We need to designate an amount that is congruent with the legal allowable amount. I would like to point out again that there is nothing stopping me from purchasing any amount of alcohol that could kill me. However, the tendency to put such tight restrictions on cannabis possession comes from fear and no statistical data or truth. We should designate the amount as three immature plants, three mature plants, and eight ounces of dried flour if we must, but we must remember that the amount harvested must provide for an uninterrupted supply for a patient until they can harvest again, which may be two to three months on this cycle, or our current allowable amount on Bill 343 is two and a half ounces every fourteen days. These amounts will conflict, and so when we change the amounts, we need to take both into consideration. Section E, there shall be one permit per residence and one permit per dwelling in a multi-dwelling residence. Home cultivation permits should be allowed per patient or caregiver and not by residence. The clause about multi-dwelling residence absolutely must be removed. Patient should not be prohibited, because someone in their building already has a permit. This is unfair. We recommend to change the language to read, "There shall be one permit per patient." If a patient designates a caregiver, the permit should be allotted to the patient in the caregiver's name. If a caregiver has more than one patient, they may possess more than one permit, but not to exceed the allowable number of patients per caregiver. That's just because, again, it takes a lot to cultivate, and so it should be at the residence of the caregiver. That should be allowed. Section H, home cultivation sites may not occur with any drug-free school zones. Home cultivation will be on private property out of public view and should not matter where a school or bus stop is, since there shouldn't be any public access to it. I'm not sure who in the entire village of Timuning or other geographically smaller villages with one or more schools or bus stops will be allowed to grow. We recommend to remove this clause. Section I, it is forbidden for a qualifying patient to cultivate or distribute medical cannabis for another qualifying patient, or for a designated caregiver to cultivate or distribute medical cannabis for another qualifying patient on a location that is not the residence of that qualifying patient. The purpose of a caregiver is to care for their patients. Since growing cannabis takes a lot of time, we highly recommend, again, that the caregivers be allowed to cultivate at their place of residence. However, the permit should be allotted to the patient or patients they are caring for. I think this clause is also a little ambiguous with regards to distribution. Legal patients should be allowed to offer medicine to other legal patients without compensation. Depending on the intention of this clause, it should be rewarded to clarify its meaning and allow for caregivers to grow on their property. If this consideration is allowed, Section A to allow cultivation on a designated caregiver's place of residence, and B to account for the caregiver's information on a permit or application will need to be amended. Some language needed. We need some verbiage prohibiting the transfer of permits. We should prohibit the use of butane extractions for non-commercial use, as butane is highly combustible and can endanger those who are not trained or do not have commercial extraction machines. We need verbiage that allows for the purchase of clones, mother plants, or seeds from licensed commercial dispensaries, reaffirming that importation of seeds is federally illegal. Patients should not be able to purchase clones, mother plants, or seeds from licensed wholesale commercial manufacturers or cultivator producers. This was my testimony for Wednesday. We stand for sensible regulations that do not encourage patients to seek help on the illicit market, but these regulations need to make sense for our community and our patients and should not be borne out of fear alone. We humbly ask the Subcommittee to consider our recommendations to the Committee on Health, and we humbly ask our policymakers to look into serious consideration what a no vote on Bill 344 to allow home cultivation would do to our most needy of patients. So I also have 343. We have the definition of allowable amount. We ask again and hope that this amount can be increased. While two and a half ounces may be enough for a light user, a patient with more serious conditions will not be covered by this amount. We ask that if you can't find the support to increase this amount, that the timeframe be removed from this clause. There is no reason why the amount should be so strict, except to limit patient access. This alone is more important than the risk of diversion. Patients should not be denied access because of some arbitrary number, and we don't know why the two and a half ounces is two and a half ounces at fourteen days, and until I see some data supporting that that is a good allowable amount, I request that we try to increase that or remove the time period. Advisory Board Created Duties. We understand that the OAG is mandated only to enforce law and not to regulate. However, we urge the Subcommittee to reconsider the oversight of this program. Commission should be established and duties as outlined in the draft program I submitted at the last hearing. We also understand that DPHS does not have the resources to regulate this entire program. While they should be still responsible for health inspections and monitoring food-grade safety, all legal and enforcement issues will fall outside their purview. We recommend to set up a commission and an office who will receive all the funding for this program, to oversee application and regulation, which will monitor the needs of all patients and businesses, to include but is not limited to environmental, banking, agricultural, law enforcement, workplace safety, and quality control issues. Guidelines will need to be set up to ensure that the program is being monitored closely. We understand the issues that you may have as a lawmaking body, but instead of just saying no due to fear of diversion, DUI, or crime, we ask that we create a solution to address these issues. We just have, I think, it might have been a copy and paste error, so I'll just skip that one. Licensed Classifications. While we understand that funding this program is going to be hard to find, especially since we are now discussing the budget of every agency and the amount of debt we have accrued has been discovered, we ask that a mandate by the people, for the people, to be fully funded out of the general fund and not be raised by licensing and inspection fees. Nowhere on this island do fees resemble anything even close to what this program is asking for. Again, a majority of the electorate voted for this law. Please find the funding to go along with it. May we suggest an analysis of the GRT that will be collected, be done, and allotted for this use, instead of using the tax money generated from this program to be funding something else? Who funds the inspections for hotels, restaurants, pharmacies, or clinics, and why should this program be treated any differently? As a side note, we are in full support of the licensing tiers, although we request to remove the fifty plant count in the type-one facility description. Fifty plants is just not congruent with the size of the facility, so we ask just to remove the plant count. Once again, we are not asking for qualifying certificates, tax breaks, or anything else to help new businesses start up. These are given so freely to any other industry that could possibly stimulate economic activity on Guam that our government takes an active response for, yet medical cannabis is again treated with a whole different standard. There are no federal tax breaks for any cannabis businesses, none. We are just simply asking to lower the fees to something that is on par with any other licensing on this island, like opening a hotel, restaurant, bar, pharmacy, or even an OxyContin manufacturer who would pay a mere $225 to be licensed on Guam. Please don't forget that clients and customers are patients, patients who would be paying for these fees as a cost of doing business out of pocket, because their insurance companies will not. We also need some language here to disallow any sort of transfer or sale of licenses or permits. We could just skip that one, that's a minor. Chain of Custody Form. It addresses the raw flower count by noting lots, but we did not include batch for any sort of manufactured cannabis or cannabis-infused products, so we just ask that wherever the word "lot" appears, that we also include batch. For the Optional Registry Card section, we ask to include language that written certifications must be carried for protection while in the possession of any medical cannabis, so should law enforcement inquire as to what you're doing with it, that you do have your written certification on you for protection. Confidential Database. This was actually asked by a chief of staff of one of the offices, and we actually were curious, so this may be a question that will need to go to legal, but we aren't sure if you can legally enforce HIPAA requirements on cannabis businesses, since that is a federal issue, so we need to include any sort of confidentiality clauses that cannabis businesses will need to abide by in this amended statute. We are submitting some recommendations for diagnostics requirements for your consideration. This was provided to us by a policy visor out of Colorado, and we'll just go ahead and submit that language. I would like to note for the record, though, that there are no pesticide standards specifically for cannabis that exist, from what we've discovered, because testing cannot be done for cannabis and pesticides specifically, so some of the pesticide regulations that are adopted are adopted because of the same thing that they would apply to tomatoes or cucumbers. We don't have any scientific data on how pesticides affect cannabis plants, or how it affects us when we consume it, because we cannot test this yet. That's a business choice, but sure. Another thing that we feel that may be lacking is what happens when a business has a failure to meet minimum diagnostic standards? If there's a recall plan of sorts? We strongly recommend to create a section here to advise what happens should a cultivator or manufacturer not meet minimum safety standards for diagnostics. I'm sure Mr. Gillen has the expertise here to advise on that. There also needs to be a procedure to request a retest on that same lot or batch that fails to meet standards because of the many variables during testing. We thank you again for your time. In closing, we submit that a few of these items are major concerns, while other items are just to clean up some confusion or conflict in the document. Grassroots Guam and Women Grow Guam wholly support the direction of the new bill submitted by Senator Barnes, and we will continue to review the program and submit any other concerns via written testimony before the designated deadline. We humbly urge the body to legislate from truth, data, and solutions, and not out of fear and the propaganda we've heard for decades. Fear should motivate us to become educated in order to find the best possible solutions for our concerns, our patients, and our community, our island. Sisuus Maasi, and thank you for having us today.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Pellicani. And if you can submit those documents to the committee, we'd appreciate it. Mr. Gillen?
Thank you, ma'am. I'd like to start also with 344.
Yes, please.
Because it's short and sweet, and...
Is that on?
It's, yeah, it's off. Maybe it's my magnetic personality. I have no problem with allowing for home cultivation. There are any number of people who, for financial reasons, are gonna need that kind of avenue. I might have a problem with being concerned about their safety, even though, you know, the requirement's gonna be that it's in a locked place, and it's, you know, I'm not worried about actually people, family or kids, having access to it. I'm worried about them getting ripped off after they get something growing, and I think a lot of them also are gonna need some help learning how to do all of this, and, you know, we need to find, either through the university or through agriculture, some people, or even people who have been in the business in the states know what this is all about. Help those folks, you know, make sure that they've got a product that's gonna work fairly well for them. I do have a problem with the language that's really a little bit weak on, if I'm a property owner and I have an apartment building, I should have the right not to allow anybody to grow any marijuana. I think you can't step on, you know, we keep talking about privacy and people's rights. Well, property owners have rights also, so I think we have to be careful about, you know, kind of just saying "may prohibit," you know, rather than saying that they reserve the right to just not allow it at all. I also note that there's no fees again for a permit to home cultivate. The existence of home cultivation plots within a school zone or within the thousand feet or whatever we have, I also agree that that's problematic, because I think, and you'll find that there are lawsuits still ongoing in Arizona, because people live a certain distance away, and they're arguing that they should be included. So, you know, you don't want to get mired in a whole lot of legal battles there, but I also understand the public sentiment about having a controlled substance within a school zone. But I think a lot of that had to do with, you know, actually people selling and offering for sale and those kinds of things. So, again, for the record, the department does not have a problem with home cultivation. Now, on Bill 343, there was a lot of cutting and pasting in that bill, and there are some inconsistencies, one of which, you know, jumps out right away, where it's still talking about the department coming up with regulations within nine months after enactment, you know? All of that needs to get cleaned up, and there are a lot of those minor things here that you can read in the testimony. I am concerned about how we're gonna deal with the term practitioner. You know, are we gonna let veterinarians write certifications? Are we gonna let... Are we going to let chiropractors? I know it says people who have a controlled substance, basically say controlled substance registration, okay? But that's generally physicians, doctors of osteopathy, dentists, veterinarians, nurse practitioners, certain advanced nurse practitioners. Are you going to include psychiatrists? You know, so I think we need to be a little bit more specific rather than just opening it up. I disagree with Mr. Fest and his assumption that the whole society of medicine that practices medicine on Guam is against the use of cannabis as a medicine. There are any number of physicians who see value. They may be very busy. They may be very busy because there are a lot who won't, okay? But that's a professional choice, okay? And I don't think we can dictate that. But I think you'll find any number of doctors. What I am concerned about is that it just, by just listing any condition that a practitioner determines may benefit from the use of cannabis as medicine, just opens it up. You don't really need an advisory board anymore to determine what a debilitating condition is. You also, there's just a counting problem there because it calls for a change from nine to 11, but I count 14, so, you know, you need to fix that. I still have a problem with not requiring registry cards. It'll be kind of a hassle if we have to either by fax or by some other secure means determine that a patient has a certification. I mean, if you get a Schedule II drug, you've got to show an ID and you have to sign a log. So now we're still talking about a Schedule I, and I think we've got to show the feds that at least we're kind of serious about what we're doing here. You know, I think eventually we're going to, you know, go the direction everybody wants to go in, but I think we have to, at least on paper, show that we're a little bit serious. On record-keeping, it says, you know, that we have to give, that the department, whoever, commission or agency, you know, gives reasonable notice that we can go in and look at records. You know, if you really want to do this right, I think we ought to be able to knock on the door and say, "Can we see your records?" We do the same thing with our prescription drug monitoring program and with our food and drug program, where we can go in and look at a record, at a list, or at least the logs of providers who have controlled substances, so that we can kind of jive them with the invoices and the lots that they have. I mean, we have, you know, there's all of this talk and discussion about, you know, chain of evidence and being able to keep track of counts, but when you have no staff, when you have people who have no, and we're under the, you're right, as Ms. Pellicani said, we are under the gun to even try to find funds that we have to, that the vice speaker is asking us to give back in our 2017 budget. I don't know how, you know, how we're going to do this except through some kind of cooperative agreement or through some commission where, because now we've got in here, you've got land management is going to be involved, you've got the Land Use Commission, you've got probably agriculture, you're going to have us, you know, it's going to be like going to the one-stop to get your permits done again. There are a lot of people that are going to be involved in this and getting it as least bureaucratic as possible is the way we ought to go, and I think there are people here who would be willing to work, you know, on this. What would present a problem is that some of those people may also be applying for licenses, and I don't know, you know, if you get them involved in the work that really needs to be done because this is a good start. You know, you've canned the regulations that we wrote that took a lot of time and effort, and that's fine, except that we lost a lot of time and effort. But if this is going to make it better, I'm all for it. I've not ever said that the medicinal use of marijuana is a bad thing. As a matter of fact, especially for children and seizure disorders, if we can find a way to do that. There is something to be said also about the amount, the allowable amount. 2.5 ounces every 14 days, and then when you start talking about infusions and, you know, production of oils and tinctures and those kinds of things, 2.5, you know, how are we going to measure that? I think it's going to take a lot more than 2.5 ounces to produce that equivalent, and then over how much time do you use it up? So we may want to talk about an indefinite amount, but when we're talking about the clean product, the herb itself, to be smoked, we probably don't need to talk too much more about 2.5 ounces, but when you're talking about tinctures, oils, and those kinds of preparations, you may want to consider, you know, larger amounts. So for the benefit of those who think that, "I don't like this," they're wrong. We just did what we thought was our best cut at it, and obviously that didn't work. So we'll support anything, as long as somebody can come up with a budget and the staffing. I can tell you that public health lab cannot provide the service for laboratory testing because of the federal money that's in there. And I think there's any number of private labs out here or, you know, somebody who's interested in doing that, but they also have to make a living. And, you know, the small amounts that they would be testing, you know, I don't know whether it would be worth it to them, maybe an established laboratory that just does it as an adjunct activity wouldn't be too bad for them, but, you know, there has to be some kind of cost that goes with that. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gillen. Appreciate it. I do have four more names on the agenda, and they just said that they supported and didn't check out the oral testimony. I want to note for the record, I'll go ahead and call your name, and if you want to present oral testimony, you're more than welcome to the table. Joseph Concepcion, he said he wanted to support. Joe Concepcion's here. Lelani Paredo, did you want to speak? Just support. Matthew Sablon, you put support. Did you want to speak?
Just support, ma'am. Just support.
Just support, thank you, sir. And then Tammy Gracia, just support. Thank you, Mr. Gillen. Do you have any questions for Mr. James?
Ladies and gentlemen, I want to take the time to thank you. We've been here for almost an hour and a half, and we've gone through a lot of public hearings, and each time we look at these attempts to make the cannabis, medical cannabis program work, we know that it's the sincere effort of everybody in this room to make this program work, and you've got the commitment that we will definitely look at all the recommendations and look at what's the best amicable resolutions to make this a win-win for everybody. I do want to take the time to thank the government agencies, public health, most especially for literally at least helping facilitate this through, and I respect and appreciate your final comments, Mr. Gillen, because, you know, sometimes statements are said and not really giving the opportunity to rebut, but I just want to say thank you for at least helping follow it through. Through all of you out there, the residents who came out time and time again, I also want to say thank you because you put your heart and soul in this and you truly want to see this program work, and a lot of you who are in the audience who did not want to speak but just here for support for these guys, thank you for being here. It's after 6:30 right now. I will call this public hearing from the Committee of Health, the Subcommittee from the Committee of Health. Let me read this right just so we get it right. The Committee on Health, Economic Development, Homeland Security, and Senior Citizens Subcommittee. Again, thank you very much. We will open the opportunity, the window of opportunity for the listening audience out there. If anyone who did not make the meeting wants to present written testimony, you may do so. We have that window of opportunity open for the next week. Our numbers are 472-3455 or 56. You can send the email through senator@tina munier barnes.com or allen@senatortina munier barnes.com. If you have, or you can do it the old-fashioned way, via fax similarly at 472-3400, and if you also want to call, you're more than welcome to do so, and our staff will be willing to take your issues and concerns like we have in the past. So again, happy liberation as we still are in Liberation Month, and thank you so much for coming out this evening. Sinamasi, we are adjourned at 6:32 PM.